You know.
That's not bad.
I check them.
Now, sometimes when it gets like sixty, I'm like, who are these people? Alright, so I'm gonna get out of the way, 'cause...
Yeah, I have some people watching over or something if I forgot something or something. Get that, get that fixed.
It's a pretty good, pretty good resource to be able to like,
Well, that's what I said.
You, for trying to remember something or whatever and...
Yeah.
Did you see what they're doing, their, uh, their modeling the city? Did you see that? They beat us to the punch.
Who did?
Ohio, someone at Ohio State University, they created, they created an algorithm to, um... They created an algorithm to help identify what the height and size and massing of the buildings were. And they're like automatically like rebuilding all the areas destroyed by the interstate. I'm like...
Oh, you...
It was my idea!
I did not tell them, so...
They took, oh, you know, it's odd. I think you got, you did, uh... The timing was strange.
Yeah.
I know you have connections over there, so... It said Matt Leisure was the brain behind this.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if I know...
Are they doing that through Cura or through the, um, CFP program?
It's, uh, uh, geography, I think.
Geography, okay. I don't know. Right. Yeah, a little more codey here.
Yeah, very codey.
Well, two.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, three, three of them.
Three of five.
Yeah.
It's India, but Truman.
No, she's, she's, uh, so I'm, yeah, I'm, uh, the chair.
Uh, yeah. Just work for you.
We'll see how, yeah, I got the, I got the list here.
Yeah, okay.
Are you the, are you the second in charge there?
Yeah. You. Oh, wow, okay.
And then you guys have a meeting tomorrow as well?
You have a, yeah.
Business meeting tomorrow.
Did that get canceled or...
Did not.
I don't know. I won't be in, I won't be here unfortunately.
Okay.
Man, I don't know my stupid...
It's crossed out on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
It does, no.
We're gonna have a, a closer six mission.
Right.
Hey, love of God, I'm gonna need it.
Okay, she did that. Maybe she just did the third email.
Here, I don't know.
All these singles sign on, uh, all this stuff's driving me nuts. Just need to get to the teams. Come on.
So, while you're, uh, running the tech, Louis, do you, are you sitting here or are you...
No, I'm gonna move, yeah.
Okay.
Or I'm gonna get... Is there a problem with me sitting here?
Yeah.
Suddenly I'm like...
Yeah.
Giving opinions. I like the brick, you know? What's wrong with that?
Question, so tomorrow's business meeting, so will we be able to... Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay.
I'm on that. I will. I'm gonna have to sit here. I'm gonna have to defer to being called me the chair. So, comfortable with that.
I gotta go over to the car over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, we have a form?
Are you here for nine fifty five South?
Correct.
Okay, we're ready to...
Alright.
Alright, we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, the next, uh, business meeting, which was scheduled for tomorrow, September twenty second at noon, has been canceled. Uh, the next commission hearing is, uh, Thursday, October sixth, uh, at four P M.
Tentatively.
Tentatively, may be canceled as well pending applications. Uh, so, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, ask the, uh, uh, staff to state their names.
I'm in Quebec. Um, I have a new title, but I can't remember. Um, I swear to tell the truth.
Do you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Alright. Alright, and, uh, would the commission members state their names?
Yes, Patrice Allen Brady.
Daniel Mather.
Matt Leisure. Alright, so we'll get into, uh, meeting minutes. Um, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Have you all had a chance to look over?
I have. I will make a motion to approve them then.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving right along. Um, so, let's see, this is my first, uh, time chairing, so, uh, bear with me. Um, so we'll move into, uh, staff approvals.
Um, we don't have any staff approvals. Yeah, we do. This month we didn't have staff approvals. This month we do have a couple, starting on page five.
Any questions or discussions on staff approvals?
No.
No.
Yeah. Either, do we have a motion to approve staff approvals?
I'm motion to approve staff approval.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's kinda how this is gonna, gonna work, so...
Quick.
Alright, so we'll get into our first case here. Uh... So the first agenda item BD dash twenty-two dash oh-nine dash oh-oh-four, nine fifty-five South High Street. Um, the applicant come forward, yep. Yeah, since we don't have any speakers today.
Yes, we had no public forums. Uh, and also, just for the record, we'll say that, uh, agenda items number one and two, seven sixteen South High Street and one eleven Liberty Street, were moved to, uh, staff, uh, approval at the last business meeting. So no action required.
Alright, so can you, uh, uh, state your name and affiliation and your address, please?
Kyle Green, um, with Gunsman Architecture Interiors, project architect, and, um, my address, uh, one seven one East Gate Street.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great.
Okay, so this is an application that was conceptually reviewed at the June second, uh, hearing. August eighteenth, business meeting commissioner comments included, um, either keep both shed dormers or remove both. Uh, and the new wall dormer should be less ornate than the original dormer on the east, which is the front elevation, to distinguish them as modern additions to the building. Our revised drawings have been submitted and the new dormer trim is now more simplified. Additional discussion points noted by staff, um, how much of the existing front porch material can be repaired and what will need to be replaced? Just noting that we would like to see as much original fabric retained as possible. Um, there was a nineteen fifty-four photo that I showed, uh, that had the original chimneys on it, and the drawings do not reflect the existing shortened chimneys, so is there a plan to restore them to its original height? That's the way they seem to appear on the drawing. Uh, proposed paint color for wood trim is dark night, which is black. It appears that most of the stone lintels, um, sills and lintels are previously painted and should be painted to match the unpainted natural color of the stone. In general, you know, if they want to paint wood black, it's not the, you know, the most, the chock, the one we would choose, but black and dark blue are popular right now, so if the commission thinks the paint of the wood is black is okay. Staff is willing to handle that, along with stones not painted black. Oh, I didn't go to my reference permission card. Um, so, uh, as you may recall, staff and commissioners have disagreed a little bit about some aspects of this. Uh, based on C C three-one-one-six point eleven, number four, changes which have taken place over the course of time are evidence of the property's history and environment. These changes may have a part of significance in their own right, and if so, this, this significance shall be respected. Uh, therefore, staff recommends that the easternmost shed dormer on the north elevation to be retained and repaired. If removal of both circa nineteen thirty shed dormers is approved, detailed interior and exterior photos and measurements should be submitted to H P O staff for the record to document their removal, and Kyle and I have already discussed, discussed that a little bit. Uh, also based on C C, C C three-one-one-six point eleven, number three, each property shall be recognized, recognized as a product of its own time. Uh, alterations that have no historical basis and which seek to create an earlier appearance shall be discouraged. For that reason, staff recommends that, that any new dormers be distinct, distinguished from the original brick wall dormer on the top by simple fine wood trim that has been done. Any dormers, new dormers should not cover or affect original freeze band windows, one on the south does, so we could discuss that a little bit. Uh, new windows in the new wall dormers to be from the approved list, uh, with window quote to be submitted to H P O staff for review and approval. Any exterior paint colors to be submitted, uh, any new exterior light fixtures to be submitted to H P O staff for review and approval.
Alright.
I saw the list.
So would you like to walk us through some of the...
Sure.
The updates and, and take a look?
Yeah, so, um, I, I guess I, I'll just touch on a couple of the, the items that, um, Connie, uh, first listed. Um, the chimneys, I believe our stated goal is to, um, keep the, uh, the existing chimneys as is. Um, our conceptual review involved removing one of the chimneys in lieu of, uh, an egress window for a bedroom on the third floor. We've removed that bedroom, so we've reduced our, um, our bedroom count from ten to nine, removed that new window and kept the chimney. Um, there's a question about chimney height. I don't think it's our, um, I don't think we're extending the height of the chimneys that are already there. Um, but, but we'll keep all the ones as is. Um, the lintels, um, we will, uh, first the porch, the porch. Um, we wanna retain as much as possible. There's some intricate detailing, uh, um, along the, um, you know, at the, at the top of the porch. Um, I, I, you know, it's, it's tough to say exactly how much is gonna be able to be saved, but we, we're gonna save as much as possible. I think that, I think the top, we can, we can save and, um, you know, as much of the, of the posts. And it looks like the worst condition is, is sort of on the base and, um, that might need to be rebuilt a little bit. Um, but yeah, our, our goal is to keep as much as possible, um, and repair it and, and paint it, as Connie said. Um, what other items? Um, the dormer, um, it would be our preference to remove both of the, uh, the shed dormers that were not original. Um, but, um, you know, understand the, um, historic preservation office's stance on, um, keeping the one dormer that we're not going to, um, immediately replace with, with the gable. Um, we just think that it will, um, it, it sort of complicates and clutters that facade to have different dormer types, um, next to each other. Um, and just to, uh, just to restate, we're replacing the dormers because the two shed dormers, um, they, they don't meet egress currently. And there were, um, there were apartments up there previously, um, that didn't have egress windows, so, um, this is a way to solve that and, um, you know, bring the building up to a building code best we can. Um, some of the other changes, um, it's easier for me to flip through the old set that I highlighted. Um, talked about the chimney, talked about the removing of, um, one of the bedrooms to get the count down to nine, um...
I'll bring up the freeze band window.
The freeze band window, uh, at the dormer.
Yeah.
Um, and the question was to, whether we are, uh, you don't recommend, um, removing the freeze band on the north side, is that correct?
On the south.
South side, south side. Um, I believe we're doing that to get an, uh, an egress window for height. I mean, that's, that's sort of what they didn't do on the shed, on the shed dormers previously, and that's why they're not code compliant at the moment. I don't think we can, um, let me try to pull up my elevation here.
Yeah, maybe we can clarify that exactly. So, is there an existing photo if you hear, Louis?
Way it varies.
Just, just so I...
I don't know why somebody's flip on her side sometimes, when they're not that way, my child. Um...
That's the north.
That's the south side, so, um, so, no, no, that was it, right there. So you see the one that's, um, there's the freeze band windows at the top, just turn your head outside.
Yeah, basically this, the, the window, that, that window right there, okay.
Well, the dormer would be aligned with these windows here, I believe.
No, no.
Yeah, that's the one.
It is this one, yeah.
So, there's a freeze band window there, it would displace that, so...
And, and it would, um, sort of mimic what's on the front in, in, in a simplified form, but, um, yeah, it's a, it's a building code height, window sill height, uh, issue at that, you know, for that window.
The question was, could it be moved back a little bit, and he was saying he didn't think it could be...
Moved back?
Moved back on the building.
Oh, towards the rear of the building? You were probably talking to Doug from our office. I'm filling in for Doug today, 'cause he had a family emergency thing, so, um, but yeah, um, I'll just look at the plan.
Is it this, this elevation that we're talking about?
South, yeah, yeah.
So, there's a freeze band window there, it gets nixed for the egress window.
Right.
Yes, or the egress dormer.
Yes, yes. Window, thanks.
Um...
Yeah, there you go. Thanks.
My question was, since the third window back doesn't have a freeze band of window, could it be there instead?
I see.
Still have symmetry, but not displaced, uh, his own fabric.
Um, I mean, it doesn't fall in the bedroom that we have laid out on, but, um... I think, I mean, so, I, we would prefer to keep it here, um, because this is sort of the layout that, that works the best with sort of the interior walls. Um, you know, honestly, we could probably make it work if it was a, a deal breaker, but I, I think we'd like to keep it where it is. Um, but we'll sort of, um, hear your thoughts on that and, um, adjust accordingly. But I think that, um, we can put a pin in that, I guess, but that was sort of the changes that we made from the, from the last, um...
And then, I need a reminder, was there painted stonework on the base of the building once upon a time, or did it come by turn?
Some of it is, and some of it's kind of coming off, I guess Doug, we had talked about, um, he was kind of saying it looks, some of them, some of it started coming off. Could we just kind of remove it? So, that's kind of a point of discussion. I said, you know, if it can come off without damaging the stone...
Right.
That's what we prefer.
Yeah, yeah.
Rather than repainting it.
For sure, yes. Right, yeah, agreed with that.
Yeah, um...
But it hasn't painted for a long time.
Yeah, it looks, it looks pretty bad. I mean, we definitely wanna make it look better. Um, just look at the photo.
So we could, in that regard, if this, that were the only thing in the application, we could, we could say, assuming that the stone from the sand removal, the paint, that's the direction the commission would prefer? Okay.
Yes.
And if not, we could have them come back to, for another approach?
To submit a paint color that matches the natural stain, stone color as well as possible.
Okay, okay.
And, and we're talking about this here, or...
Any of the, any of the, uh, stone lits, sills and lintels.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure if any of the foundation's been painted.
Okay, yeah, yeah, definitely, um, are, are, we're gonna try to remove the, the, um, the existing paint on the sills and lintels. And, uh, we understand that if it's damaged or can't do it, or chipping, or, you know, we can preserve it by painting it a similar color to the original stone, um, as recommended by H P O, um, for sure, I guess.
Okay.
And, so, question on the chimney height. So on your, the existing photos, they're pretty short right now.
Right, yeah.
And then your drawings, they're, they're taller, so...
Can you just correct them on the drawing?
Sure. Yeah, I think, uh, that might, might have been a drawing, um, issue. I don't think we've... I think, you know, our notes say to just sort of, um, retain existing...
I assume that you aren't going to do that, but this should show what's there.
We'll should, we'll, we'll lower the height of the chimneys.
Okay. And did you say you're rebuilding those, or you're just leaving them as is?
We're leaving them as is, unless, um, there's a structural or safety issue that, that needs to happen, obviously we'll repair it then. But, um, I don't think there is, so I think we'll, we'll keep them as is.
So Connie, that's just an existing condition and...
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And just to go, just to reach, go to the, the guidelines on page thirty. Um, why, why I'm referring to the freeze band window is it says that windows that help define a building's historic character should be preserved even if the building is converted to a new use. Replacement of windows should be considered only as a last resort. That's just talking about windows, but, um, we consider that, for the freeze band windows to be part of the historic character.
So really that's the primary thing that we're discussing today?
And this elevation, I think. The replacement of the sheds with one dormer.
I was wondering.
Yeah, so, yeah, currently there's a shed dormer here as well as here.
Right.
Um, and that would be the new, one new, um, dormer to mimic the front. Um, you know, it's a pretty tight squeeze between the chimney and the, and the existing bump out here anyway. Um, so it's sort of an odd condition, but, um, you know, we thought this simplified the, the elevation.
My view is that we're replacing, they're replacing two non-original dormers with a non-original dormer that, in my opinion, is better than the original non-original dormer. And, so I think that's a win, in my opinion. I, I don't think it needs to be symmetrical, so I don't mourn the loss of the symmetricality of the nonoriginal dormers. The, this building doesn't really trade in symmetry all that much. Um, and it does, the dormer on the right, that they're proposing has, might actually line up with the window on the first floor, so I feel like it looks as if it were there, even though it's gonna be detailed, not as such. So I think it touches lightly as possible and improves the building.
I agree, um, honestly. I think that the, uh, cleaner design, um, is, um, fantastic. The cleaner, um, new dormer that you put up there, uh, compared to the more ornate one that we originally, I think we saw...
Yeah.
Um, is, is much better, and I think it fits the character of the home, um, and then also reflects the fact that it is new, right? Um, at the same time, and, and there, I, there is some symmetry there in that space, 'cause all the windows are properly lined up, um, and in a way that it just adds to, in my opinion, the value of the home itself. So, um, the, the new dormer and getting rid of the shed dormers, I don't have any qualms with at all.
Yeah, I think I'm generally on board with, with that, so it, getting residential units back up there and bring up the code makes sense. So I can, I can kind of live with going against the guidelines on that point.
Do we wanna talk about the freeze window?
Yeah.
I think that's the thing last week.
So maybe we can flip to the other elevation?
I think it would be, as Connie suggested, it would be really nice if that freeze window could be maintained, if the window could be moved over. Um, and, you know, we trade horses a lot here, so... The dormers on the other side, or the one dormer on the other side, allowing them to take away the, the non-original, original, or existing dormers, then we could ask them to rearrange their interior walls and keep a window.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a, uh, you know, you, you'll have to tell us if that's impossible, but, uh, it sounds like something you can, can look at.
Yeah, we can definitely look at it. I think we can probably make that work, um, without getting into it all, you know, but I think, um... Yeah, I, I think if that's the preference, then I think we can, uh, shift over some, some spots and make that work. I think that's a, that's a compromise we can make happen.
Okay, great.
If for some reason we get in, into this and there's something I'm not seeing here on the spot that, that would, um, you know, hinder us from doing that, is that something that we can come back and work with you and say, hey, we talked about it here, um, it's actually not possible for these reasons? Um, is that gonna...
If the commission states that as part of the motion?
Just as something, just in, you know, I'm not gonna come back and just say, oh yeah, we didn't want to. But if there's something that I'm not seeing, 'cause, you know, uh, just, like I said, to be honest, I haven't, I wasn't the one working on the drawing. So I'm looking at it here, I'm thinking in my head, I think I can make this work, um...
I understand that.
You know, I don't, I don't wanna, um, promise something to you guys if, uh, if I can't do it. So I just wanted to ask that question.
I think if you have to come back and there's a reason why you can't do it, uh, it'd be nice to see why, right?
Yes, absolutely.
About, um, why it's not a feasible option.
Okay. But I, like I said, I think we can make it work, I just, uh, yeah.
And how many units did you end up with, I think?
We're, nine, yeah.
Nine, okay, so you started with ten and landed nine, so that's...
Yeah, I think it, I think it works out really nice. We've got a nice big, open lounge space on the third floor where that was, so that's a good shared space for everybody.
Okay, okay.
So the only other thing was that, um, the, the windows will need to come back, we need to come to the approval list and...
Yes.
Any exterior light fixtures, and is the commission okay with black paint for wood trim?
I'm fine with it.
As long as it's not...
Yeah, we included a couple of photos at the end, um, of sort of what we were thinking, um, just other, other projects that had the, the black porch trim and, um...
I think it's, I think it's very important that when it's black trim and it's existing trim that's been painted, uh, to kingdom, kingdom come that it be cleaned up nicely, so that the detail will be freed.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise it just looks messy.
Yes, I understand.
Alright, so we have a motion on anyone wanting to stab it?
I'll follow the source of this motion. Uh, I can give a shot. I make a motion to approve the application granted that the windows are approved by staff, uh, from the approved list, that the stone is, has the existing paint removed, and if the existing paint cannot be removed without damaging the stone, that a color is found that is approved by staff and that matches the stone as closely as possible. Am I speaking too fast?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that the window on the south side, uh, be moved to, you know, the west, so the existing freeze window is not eliminated, and that the new dormer lines up with the second, first and second floor windows below. And that we approve the black color for the, as the new paint for the trim.
And we approve the dormer on the north side, thanks.
And the removal of...
Of the sh, of the shed doors. What they've proposed on that.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, yeah, good job, yeah, alright. Looking forward to seeing that project.
I know, beautiful building.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright. Send in our next group on your way out, if you, if you don't mind.
Is there an address?
Yeah.
Eight forty-one.
Eight forty-one, South Front.
You ready for us?
Yep.
All right.
A little more intimate room here.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so next up, we've got case BD dash twenty-two dash oh-nine dash oh-oh-six, eight forty-one South Front Street, uh, Year Park Limited. Would you all introduce yourselves, and then I'll swear you in.
Jim Maniachi from Taff Law.
I'm John Iman with NVA Architects.
Doug Urban with Stonehenge.
Adam Trager of Stonehenge.
All right, so raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yeah, I do.
All right. All right, Connie?
So what they are requesting action on is, uh, by ingress egress on South Front Street and egress on Bank Street. It's what they do not want. Demolition of the existing two-story brick house at eight thirty-five South Front Street. Um, and applications to demolition, renovation, and a new addition was conceptually reviewed August five, twenty-twenty-one, March third, April seventh, and July seventh, twenty-twenty-two. August eighteenth, BD's business meeting comments included. Provide alternative designs for the new construction that have been studied to preserve the historic brick house, uh, invited HPO staff and at least one commissioner to the proposed onsite meeting with public service staff. So the proposed project includes partial demolition of the circa nineteen-seventeen contributing warehouse building, complete demolition of the associated contributing brick garage, complete demolition of the circa eighteen-eighty contributing brick house, and complete demolition of the associated non-contributing rear deck and concrete block garage. HPO staff does not support demolition of the two-story brick section of the house at eight thirty-five South Front Street. It's a contributing building providing a buffer between an existing one-point-five-story brick cottage and a supposed new apartment. Uh, approval of any part or, any partial or complete demolition requires definite plans for reuse of the site prior to approval of the demolition. The commission has expressed regret for approving demolition at another project site before reviewing and approving a final plan for replacement. The applicant states, under three-one-one-six-point-oh-eight, unusual and compelling circumstances, that it, it is impossible to bring the integrated site into use under legal standards for access without the demolition of the building. The existence of the building makes the redevelopment, redevelopment of the integrated site, including its use as, as is, even if it weren't redeveloped, impossible. Staff position just is that we haven't really seen that work yet, that shows that. Just as we were saying to, to, um, the previous applicant, show your work. Uh, that's what we wanted, is to show the work. What, what did you start out with when you, you know, you had all these buildings, including a house? And you assumed you had to keep that house. What was your first sketches like? What were your first sketches like to, um, for a footprint, uh, to include and, and retain that house? We have, just haven't seen that, that work. So that's what we're kind of looking for, I think. Uh, so, uh, you talked about setting a site visit, and, uh, staff recommends continuing the application to allow time for an onsite meeting, including applicants, public service staff, HPO staff, and one or two of the commissioners.
So can we get a clarification on the commission body? I mean, 'cause there's.
Right, you're probably wondering where everyone is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we do have a forum. I'm the vice chair, I'm coming in for Cynthia tonight.
Okay.
We have five seated commissioners, so this is a.
Five total, so there's two missing today?
Yes, yes, so there's three.
Okay, and that's Cynthia and Jeff?
Uh, Cynthia and, uh, Toby Ein.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great, well, thank you. Um, well, I, um, I'll start.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll get started here, as, as far as, um, where we are, what we'd like to present, what we've done. From the last meeting, you know, two of the items we walked away from that we've, that we have affirmatively acted on, first of which was, um, dealing with Bank Street. And we provided you with correspondence from our engineer, we did, um, onsite field verification of existing grades, and explored all that. Um, at, once we, um, had a drawing and the letter from the engineer, we did contact transportation. Unfortunately, the person that I've been dealing with there is no longer at the city. And his boss has not, and I'd be happy to send you the emails, uh, has not responded to me over twenty-eight days. And I don't know if it's the desk veto, or doesn't like people with the name Doug. We've talked in the past, but they're not talking to me. So it isn't as though I don't want to be out, I, I want to resolve this as quickly as possible.
And maybe we can assist with that.
Perhaps. Um, any, any hope would be greatly appreciated, because, um, we're, we're getting nowhere there. Even though I do believe, you know, when they went out and looked at the site previously, that's when, you know, their preference was that we had ingress and egress on Front Street. We provided that email for Brandon Hayes. Um, and he and Dan Blyshman, who was his boss.
And he's gone, I was saying Brandon.
Brandon is gone, but Dan, his boss, is still there. And Dan was there at that time, after that site visit, when they issued that email. So Dan is the person I've been contacting, and I forwarded him the same drawing that you have, as well as the letter from V three, explaining all the re, you know, all the constraints associated with Bank Street and the fact it's twelve percent grade. And, and then also, I, just as a general question, there are drive aprons that are north of us. Were, did those, did those additions appear before this commission? Were there additions to the houses, like garages?
Yeah, there, there were some garages, there were a couple of garages that were built.
Okay.
Improved, yeah.
Well, because that's exacerbated the problem. Quite candidly, if you go out there and look, you'll see it exacerbated a bad situation. But nonetheless, we have attempted to do that, and we, and we do have, and, and John could speak, uh, far better on the exact detail, the minutia of all that, than I can. Um, and then also with respect to, um, so that was, you know, um, the egress provision, and, uh, one other thing that I did here at the last commission meeting was reaching out to our neighbor, and I've sent a letter to Mr. Bronte, who is the property owner, who knows the house immediately, can take you to this single-family home, um, and engaged him to contact me for an in-person meeting, or a phone call, or however he'd like to do it. We could keep him apprised of everything that we are doing, um, here at our project. So with that, I'm gonna hand over to John right now, and he can talk to you through some of these specific issues as relates to Bank Street and our constraints.
Sure. So, starting with, uh, this exhibit that, um, was in that package that we just, um, sent in, well, two months ago at this point in time. This represents, this is this one, so if you guys have it on your tablets. It's the survey that was submitted. With, it was in the package.
It's been a while, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, there we go. So what this represents is, uh, we had, uh, V three actually go out there and do some additional survey work up and down Bank Street there, to try to get just basically more information about the existing conditions that are, that are there in the alleyway. And what the blue represents is actually where the existing road sits today. And you can see, you know, like a point maybe. See, right here in this corner, that, that's always where we've had the problem, in this site in terms of access. But you can actually see how the road as it exists today crosses over the existing right-of-way line onto, uh, a different parcel. And if you got a chance to read through the letter that was, uh, submitted by, by V three, that was also in that package, it talks about the grade conditions, particularly right from here down to right about in here, in the sense that as those grades exist today, they far exceed, uh, any kind of design standard that would be acceptable to the city of Columbus. So if we look at solutions for that, in terms of trying to, what would it take to make that work? It's basically rebuilding all of it. 'Cause you'd really have to start back over in this area in order to be, basically cut the grades down low enough in order to make the grades acceptable from a city design standard. The problem with that still exists is that where the right-of-way goes from the forty to the twenty, the right-of-way jogs, as we've talked about in the past. So that road of that street is really only about sixteen feet. So, so one of the things that Doug just mentioned was some of these existing houses here that have done some improvements there. It looks as though, and we didn't survey it all, but it does look as though some of that improvement goes into the existing right-of-way. And I think it's common knowledge that the residents there have been doing some of their own improvements. You know, they, they put some dirt along this side and, um, made it wider on their own, but it's just dirt. You know, 'cause they have been parking their cars there forever. So, given the, uh, well, the existing conditions, you know, and I think we can all agree that from a compelling standpoint, this project is very compelling, right? It's got a lot of history to it, and we're doing the best we can to preserve everything that's intact. But there are certain things we can't solve. And that is, in particular, this area here, and quite honestly, this area here, because in order for us to improve, improve that area further up Bank Street, we'd be doing improvements on all of these properties up to this point here. Obviously, this is rational over here, but the roadway still would have to be an issue. The thing that nothing can solve is this pinch point. You know, there's, there's, there's money that you can put into the project, without a doubt, but any kind of money's not gonna solve that. You know, 'cause we've already researched that, we've talked to the property owners across the street, there's no cooperation. We've talked to the city about trying to, to have the city obtain additional right-of-way. They have zero interest in doing anything on Bank Street. And that's one of the things that was in that previous letter that we got from Traffic Engineering Group, is, is that they have zero intentions with Bank Street. So all of those improvements start to fall on, or they do fall, on the private developer. And with all of the research that we've done in the past, and with this survey work, and looking at these, these, these existing conditions, the, uh, the, the, this part of the project is just not accessible. It's not something that we can rely on, and it's not a fair and reasonable, uh, access point for the site. The city did say they would grant us access over here, which we already have. It would have to be widened, they've said, they've said okay. They've said basically that that is the point on Front Street where we would have two-way access to the site. So the gymnastics of going and trying to do something back here is quite honestly just unrealistic for a variety of reasons. Um, there's, there's site constraint issues, there's access issues, there's grade issues, there's doing work off-site, there's doing work on other people's properties. So all of those things add up to be a hurdle that is, is something that we can't get through. And that's the reality of that condition. You know, uh, just to back up for a second, and to respond to your comment about, you know, some of the design, design approach aspect in terms of what we went through from the beginning on this. Well, we always assumed that those non-conforming houses could be removed. You know, because that's, those additions that were put on there are just bad. They're, they're not worth anything to garage, the concrete blocks, and so forth. So right or wrong, that was an assumption that we made.
You assumed the entire house, not just the exterior?
Initially.
The rear additions?
Initially, it was the rear additions.
Okay.
You know, as we got into it, and, and, you know, I've been looking at this property for several years now. You know, we started looking at the existing building, the, you know, the conforming building, the one, the one that's of issue. And getting into it and looking at it, you know, the degree of difficulty in renovating that house became very apparent very quickly. Uh, that's where we got the structural engineer involved, which is the letter that we submitted a long time ago, and, but it, it was in this last seminar as well, reiterated the fact that this house is beyond repair, is kind of the best way to say it, and he said it in a much more technical way. But there's also numbers that were kind of put to, to, you know, to that effort as well. And I will say as a, as a clarification, um, the numbers that are in that letter, and the other additional numbers that we supplied regarding some site improvements along this property line, at this point are probably six to eight months old. And we all know how the world has treated our economy, and all of those prices are probably at least ten to fifteen percent out of whack at this point. That's just the way it is, you know, something you gotta deal with. So I, I think, you know, the right or wrong part of it is that, is that we, we kind of reached this conclusion fairly quickly, that saving that house was just not a practical solution. What we've tried to do over these various meetings is show you why. You know, um, could we save it? Okay, yes, but here's what it would take to save it. Not even considering the renovation part, you know, just the site aspect. We've always kind of oiled into the site, you know, because that's where the most burden is on this project. Um, access, and then the other part that became a burden to the project is when, at one of our very early meetings, Monday by the first or second one, um, I don't want to use the word directive, but, um, the comment that we got from the commission was save the warehouse. You know, save the walls to the warehouse. And it wasn't just the corner where, you know, that sign is, it's like, save as much of that brick wall as you can. So just again to reiterate, you know, uh, from here all the way around, all the way around, is the warehouse portion of the building that we intend to retain. Um, and I don't, again, I try to speak kindly to words, but it, but to some degree, it is very much an either-or scenario. Um, we can't do both, is the conclusion that we've come to, in the sense that preserving that house in its integrity and preserving the warehouse walls. And in our opinion, and everybody has one, of course, um, the warehouse is, is such a dominant feature in the community. It's a dominant feature on the corner of the site. And we felt that we can make something really cool here, and we've given, you know, you know, you know, a concept of what we intend to do there in terms of retaining that wall, building inside the footprint, going up and doing a cool, um, play on a warehouse old industrial historic building with a new contemporary structure for the residences above kind of thing. So I think we all like that concept, and so from a, from a hierarchy priority standpoint, we feel that the warehouse in, of course, the tower building, take that out of that conversation, uh, 'cause that's a given, um, that the warehouse really does have a priority over the single-family house for a variety of reasons. And, you know, you can, you know, there's, there's, there's obviously a hardship conversation in here as well. Um, I know there's different opinions on, you know, this is constituted a hardship or not. You know, I, I think from my opinion, and this is probably more from a business-minded perspective, you know, I'm, I'm an architect, I do what I can to preserve, protect, you know, build, retain, renovate, I've done a lot of it. But, um, looking at it from a standpoint of just pure economics, you know, what we've proven to ourselves in a variety of different ways, not just once, and we've shared all of that information with the commission. You know, to, to retain that corner, or that particular site on there, has just huge financial burdens. And again, take away the, the cost of renovating the house itself. You know, you tear down the, the wood, the block building and stuff in the back, you still have that to deal with. But you also have all of those other site constraints that you gotta deal with. And you have a condition back here that is not solvable, within our means, anyway. And so that's, 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 I hate to say it, but that's, that's the conclusion, and again, I apologize, but we did come to that conclusion fairly early. You know, we, we knew there were site constraints, we knew there was issues with access. As soon as we, you know, took the path that we're gonna retain the warehouse exterior walls, that created another back point on the site. And unfortunately, that's the only point on the entire four sides of the site where we have two-way access. So, um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at in, in terms of, you know, going through these existing site conditions. You know, the letter from our civil engineer goes through some of the design considerations that are of problem, and that are also to a large degree unsolvable because of the off-site and the improvements that would be required to somebody else's property. You know, so there's a variety of things that, you know, cause problems back there. Again, what we included in here was, um, the, the original estimates, and again, these are dated back in June, so they're, you know, four months older, a little older. Uh, but that's supportive information in terms of the degree of difficulty in the site improvement aspect of things. Uh, the letter from Sherkodanivan was the original letter, we haven't had this updated, this one's dated back in June as well. But it's important that that's part of the record, because, uh, you know, there is a professional opinion in terms of the integrity of the structure, and that's what it gets down to. And then, um, to, to, not to necessarily close, because I'm sure there's gonna be lots of discussion here, um, but, you know, Jim put the letter together that does go through the compelling circumstances of this particular project. And I'm not gonna speak to Jim's legalese of things, but just to point out, you know, some of the things, um, that are critical in there, you know. You know, the, the, uh, non-compliant aspect, which we've talked about, you know, the two-way traffic is critical to the project. We have to have that, uh, as any site does. Um, access, you know, uh, you know, uh, on the warehouse side of the building, you know, if, if we retain the, again, it's, it's, I hate to say it this way, but it is an either or and we can't do both. And if the priority is to save the warehouse and use that as the iconic feature in connection with the tower building, then that's the solution that we should all be buying into, you know, because that's the marquee of this site. You know, that house is contributing, you cannot deny that. Um, it does have problems, can't deny that either. There are compelling circumstances when we go to renovate and preserve the warehouse site that make that other house, it, impractical. It's just, it's for a variety of things. And I can go on and on, it sounds like a broken record, you guys have heard this in the past. But I do think that in my professional opinion, and you guys can have your professional opinion, that the warehouse building and the tower building should be the icon and the features of this particular project. And in order to make that feasible and viable and successful, then the compromise is that that single-family house beside unfortunately has to be compromised. You know, it's, it's not an easy answer or solution, but it's the right solution in order to get to the right solution for the entire site at whole. And I think that's what's most important about this, is we have this huge opportunity, you know, to take this whole corner and transform it completely. It's been non-occupied for I don't know how many years. The warehouse has been empty. Well, there was an occupant in there, I shouldn't say that, you know, two, three years ago they vacated, but it was just a, it was a stage set person. There was one employee, you know? It was cool, but you know, not practical. So to take that opportunity and to transform this into something that will be, will be iconic for years to come, I think is what we really should be focusing on. I know we have an awful lot of responsibility to do when we get to that point in terms of getting to the building, the actual design, renovating the warehouse, the exterior windows, all of those things come into play. And we're ready to take that on, we're more than ready. Um, but we need to cross this hurdle and get that green light so that we can continue on with the project.
And I just want to add as it relates to the house, you know, we have affirmatively stated, I actually have the proposal on my desk um, to retain a consultant to document the history of the structure. Um, and, um, we also are really interested, you know, just in salvage period, in that we would salvage everything we can from the house and reuse it in our property or make it available to anybody who would want it. And, and also within, um, you know, our proposed development, we would be able to tell, you know, have something that displays or tells the story of, you know, the house that was there, what it was.
Do something featured, feature something at the entry of the building. There would be like a historic plaque, picture, story, date, you know, all those kinds of things that would come out of the HABs report. And not necessarily put it inside the lobby, but put it outside the lobby or somewhere near the front door that could be a hallmark. Maybe it's down at the corner, close to the, you know, the Jones Hill sign that's painted on the wall. There's options, but the idea is to, as Doug said, memorialize the building and, um, and it's part of the, the local community fabric.
This is, if I may say too, John, because you've been involved and I have from the beginning, I believe that we, when we initially started on the project, the scale of the project has, I mean, some of the, as we looked at the site, the warehouse, we kept more of that as we've gone back through.
We kept all of it.
And we kept all of the warehouse originally. Um, you know, we had different plans for more, there's definitely going to be more mass there, we thought. And, you know, we scaled that back to try to maintain.
We have.
Showing the importance, you know, realizing the importance of the warehouse and the look of the overall project to the community.
Well, and we've changed the design, you know, I mean, originally, you know, we had that corner, you know, we held the form of the building, the new building above the warehouse building, uh, true to the warehouse. And through this process, we've changed that to enhance sightlines back to the warehouse, you know, to the tower building. Uh, we, you know, we've agreed to do some incremental steps in the building, uh, off of Front Street, you know, as it sets back as it goes up. So I think this process has definitely served its purpose in terms of improving what gets done with the warehouse building. And that's benefit, truthfully, you know, I've got a short story, you know, we did a project over on Fifth Avenue between Neil and I, went through the university area commission, very involved in that process. It was an old City of Columbus school site over there. And, um, I, I, I can swear that the building and the project got better because of the input from the community and the involvement of the commission. It, 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 it definitely raised the cost of the project without a doubt, but I'm proud to say that it got better as well.
We don't want that, John.
Well, we've already committed to the end of it.
No, I'm joking.
That's already done. There's a certain degree of difficulty saving that warehouse walls, there's cost in doing that.
No.
You know, and.
Yeah, we don't take, and we don't take that lightly. And I think the quick way to say it is we kind of performed our own triage, economic triage and looked, and to us, as far as we've been looking at the importance, um, you know, retaining the warehouse, um, walls and, you know, the tower itself, um, are of critical importance. And we can't have our access with the interference of that existing.
John, were you saying though, that as you were drawing a line around there, were you referring to the part of the, the north wall and the west wall that would still be removed up from the warehouse or all of it is, even if the house is?
Well, there is, there's, there's two portions. There's, um, this line goes back, you know, it comes back around. Somewhere back in the day, there was an addition put onto the original warehouse. So it's, it'd be our proposal to tear that off and get it back to the original warehouse. And then there's a section of wall right here that we'd have to remove that's, that's inside the building. So it's part of the existing wall that would never be seen from the exterior because it's underneath and in the garage portion of the building. And that's simply the, you know, because we're using this existing warehouse, I mean, the floor, so we simply have to get access to that. And, and, um, and that floor, you know, it's, it's going to get cut up, it's going to get beat up and it's, you know, we've got to dig new foundations. We've got to shore up the walls on all four sides. So it's, it's not like we're literally reusing the same concrete. We're going to be pouring a new concrete fork because it's going to get all chopped up. We've got to bring plumbing drops down and all that kind of stuff, so.
Can you explain a little bit more about the trade-off of keeping the warehouse wall versus not keeping the house? I don't understand, maybe it's in here, I missed it. But I don't understand structurally why you can keep one and not keep the other. I don't understand the physical trade-off.
It's, it's a matter of space. In some of the previous conversations we've had, we've shown diagrammatically the existing face of the warehouse with the, the north side of the warehouse, with the south side of the, the house there.
Got it. Is it, is it about the parking, like to make the parking the amount of?
It's simply a driveline and, and reguable access.
Got it, okay.
So, so there's a drawing in here, can we go to that one? But I, I think that's important to talk through. Um, it's, uh, one of your architectural plans that shows the existing house and the, the garage layout, that, that one right there.
Yeah, I think you did.
The previous one.
The previous one, just before that, Derek, you know, is that it?
Yep. So, previous iterations, we, you know, we had a lot of discussion about where the existing house is versus the dimension that you need to get two-lane access in and how that all doesn't work. So I guess, can you?
It's behind you too, if you want to point to anything to help.
Yeah, I mean, I, so, so here's the existing house, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
This is a new wall that you're going to have to build for, for, for the architecture of the building. And then you've got your two-lane access shown on this. So can you just talk us through that? Because I think all along, what we have said is you might still be able to fit your two-lane access there and keep the house. And that's kind of what that drawing is showing. So we're just trying to understand that better and, and, you know, your, your thinking behind that.
Right. Um, it really doesn't fit because when you think about, and you literally, I mean, you guys are trained in this in the sense that you need a certain amount of width, certain amount of clearance from the existing buildings. So the clear dimension from wall to wall is X and I think it's like twenty-seven feet. When you provide the, the appropriate clearances on either side of those, we start to exceed what that dimension is. And so if we build, if we start at the north wall warehouse and do the appropriate dimensions, then we're into that house. It's basically what it is. And then in, in order to try to retain that house, yeah, it, you know, without it falling over, quite honestly, because there's, there's virtually no foundations to those house, to that house. It's literally rubble rock on ground.
Yeah, that's what we remove, right? When we're removing, we would, how you.
And we've actually looked and we've talked to a contractor about, you know, about how you would shore up that house and rebuild the foundations. And you'd have to do it like in three or four sections at a time and you'd have to needle steel beams through there to support the wood frame structure above while you rebuild the foundation walls below, get into the excavation so you get a real foundation to the appropriate depths that it needs to be at. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's more than a can of worms. Uh, it, it becomes very cost prohibitive, is the bottom line. So there's, there, and I hate to hang the hat on the financial part of it, but when you, when you weigh the, and again, value is not the right word, integrity, whatever you want to say about that existing house against what it would cost to preserve it, uh, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's lost money is the best way of saying it. And I know you're saving a house, but you're putting money into a property you will never get out, even in a lifetime.
Well, and we don't have an engineering opinion that it's feasible to. I mean, they're talking about what they, how they would approach it and take a whole nother set of.
Oh, yeah, evaluation, we'd have to, yeah, they'd have to do a lot more engineering wise in order to come up with a reasonable solution.
And I, and I think it, it appears very close in looking at this drawing. I've had the same exercise in my head and going out there and, and walked it and looked at it. And it, it, in order to, even at a minimum width with clearances, you would need to be able to see traffic both directions on Front Street to get in and out of the site, you, you get into that existing structure. You're into, you're not into, it's not a whole bite, but it's definitely more than half a bite of the width of that house.
Is that an engineering requirement for this ingress egress right there that you're showing? That you need to have sightlines? I don't think that that's a requirement, right? I'm, I'm just asking that question. Well, if, if that's your driveway into the building, is the house really blocking your sightlines per what the city's telling you or? Because the existing building already is that, that you're going to keep, so I don't think that should be a factor.
Sightlines are a little bit of a factor.
You're saying like the south of the warehouse?
Right, it's already, it, the warehouse is already doing that, so why does the house?
No, I understand that.
I think you're saying more that you would actually be into the foundation.
Yes.
You, you brought up about sideways, I think more about into the foundation.
Well, more of it is just the ability, the radius of be able to get in and out of the space, um, itself.
So does that drawing not, not work then? Do you need more of a radius or?
No, it does work. There are definitely sightlines to be considered on the site, there's no doubt about it. And that's, that's a burden that we have to deal with and there's not much we can do about it.
I think what you have drawn there is exactly what you see at the Grange Garage and some other places. I don't think that there needs to be additional clearing of stuff to, to make the ingress egress work with that. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not pulling service, but I, that's just a pretty typical condition you see.
Um, yeah, it is. You coming out of garages, you know, you know, downtown, yeah, there's no doubt about it. For me, it's more about the width, you know, because your driveline can't just simply start right at the face of the existing warehouse lane, warehouse building. There has to be some level of dimension and safety off of that building in order to start your driveline. I would like to think that there would be a curb there, sidewalk there kind of thing that would protect the building and also protect, protect any kind of pedestrians that might be walking down into the garage. Twenty-six feet is kind of the, the minimum width for this type of condition for an ingress egress into a, a difficult parking garage, you know, with maneuver, maneuverability constraints. Because that does, that does have an implication on how we lay this thing out. So to me, it's a dimensional.
Just a question, is that a code requirement, the twenty-six feet or is that your design proposal? Just to, just to make sure we're clear on that.
Well, there's design principles and design standards, you know, the, you know, the City of Columbus has certain driveway width, access with driveline with those kinds of things, parking dimensions. So twenty-six is what's conferred by fire department? Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that the fire department's going to be using that as their access point, because they probably won't. But nonetheless, you know, apparatus, equipment, serviceability, you know, there are going to be other vehicles other than just people that are going to be using that. We do have to make it accessible from an ADA standpoint. So there's, there's just, there's a variety of things that come into play.
You could probably get it down to twenty-four, but it's very tight.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm a landscape architect, that's what I do all day long. So twenty feet is what you have to do in Columbus. So that's the minimum for a driveway for a parking lot. So can you go down to less than twenty-four even? Does it get to be pretty tight? Yes, but where is that twenty-six coming? If that's what's driving you pushing up into the house.
Yeah, I think from a, from a functional standpoint, twenty foot ingress egress at that location would not be.
Well, and that, that's what I'm trying to get to, it's like, why twenty-six and why are you proposing that dimension?
Well, the existing dimension's like twenty-six and change. So the actual driveline is going to be something less than that.
What, what existing, so just between the warehouse and the house?
But, not according to what I measured, but, and, but I'm not an architect or an engineer, but I just used the tape measure with another person holding the other end. And it was like twenty-eight feet nine inches.
It could be, I don't, there's a survey document that had that dimension on there, you know, so.
Which is why you want to go out and look at it.
That's exactly why I think we should all, you know, be there on the same spot.
Well, we did do that. I mean, I know you were there, you were there.
That was, right.
And it was at the very beginning too.
Yeah, yeah. Public service has been on site.
Falling down on, okay, so the house is the big, the big number. Number two, I think that this is a nice drawing and it's clearer than the past drawing.
Yes.
So I have the house as the sticking point. So I think what we're driving toward is a blown-up drawing of that, you know, larger scale, dimensions on it, clear, uh, lines that delineate existing versus proposed. Um, so that people can understand where the existing warehouse is, where the, where the existing house is, where the driveline is in relation to those. But it's not just the driveline, right? There's some sort of space involved between the two. So that's, it's not just twenty-six feet. They also want some space between.
Right. I mean, what I would like to see is you actually show the house remaining and the building working in it. But, uh, you know, so that's obviously what we've been asking.
Well, we did show that. We, we did do an exhibit, uh, there was more of a site plan exhibit that showed retaining that existing house and pulling the new building to the south and what we would have to do to the site in terms of retaining walls to shore up that existing other building to the north there, because it's basically sitting on a property.
Where'd you do that with the building wall here?
In that scene, in that one, we are, yeah. But if we pull everything south, then we've got that huge.
What I'm saying is notch, you know, so the, the house remains, you notch out the building. We've even talked about adding units above to, so you don't mess up your unit count. So that's what we talked about like six months ago.
Yeah.
I think maybe it's just too that it's been a little bit more difficult to read.
Right, right.
And then here, if you, if you, if you focus on that side, that area, this is the north side of the warehouse, south side of the house and all that area in between, so the, the commission can really feel comfortable with every detail of that, every measurement of it.
Right.
I think that's what they're looking for.
We've supplied that and we've done it in a couple of different forms.
But I'm saying that it, it wasn't clear. At the, at the, at the meetings, at the meetings, the commission was always kind of struggling with it. Where is this? What does this mean? What does that dotted line mean?
Right.
And I think they're just trying to.
Can I ask this question? When is the next meeting?
That kind of depends. Um, I have this meeting, I'm, it's supposed to be October sixth.
Right.
It, you know, so if, if we have an October sixth hearing, because this was the last one, it was delayed, any revised materials would have to get to me by about September twenty-ninth. And I don't know if that's a turnaround people could do. If it is, we will hold the meeting. If it isn't, it's going to be pointless.
I don't necessarily know, and maybe I'm being presumptuous. I don't, I think actually would behoove us prior to that next time is to physically go out there and throw rocks at this and show you why the hell we're here telling you.
And also have someone from public service.
Right. I can't guarantee that one, you can do, you can do that one. Yeah, I, I can't, I've, I've tried and no one's listening to me.
And if, if you could zoom in a little bit on this, so just to come to this issue, you know, we originally did not propose this as egress or access. So we're, we're reacting to like the first diagrams way back when. Um, so, so I'm glad that now that exercise, you've gone through that and we can talk about it in a more, you know, real way.
Well, you did ask us to investigate.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying now, now we have some more information and you kind of, you know, track that one down. I'm saying now, now we have some more information and you kind of, you know, track that one down so we can understand all the constraints. But we can hear also from, you know, public service, hopefully if we can get someone to come out.
John.
Yeah, just, just please mix that arrow on there just for the, for the next go around. So we're not thinking that's still what you're proposing.
Well, true.
Let's say that you're frustrated. I, I get, I sense some frustration. We're frustrated too, I'll tell you. Because you said yourself that you came in and you assumed that you could knock down the house. And you never gave us a, a B option of keeping the house. And I think we've said it six different ways that we would like to see an option where the house is kept. But we've gotten plenty of material about financial hardship, physical hardship, all sorts of reasons not to keep the house. I get it, but we, we wanna see a design that would include the house. And if, if not a design, some sort of narrative that says if we could, if we had to keep the house, we can make the project work this way. And it stinks. And that's why we don't wanna keep the house. We wanna see the architectural ramifications of keeping the house, not just the financial and structural ramifications of keeping the house.
Yeah, I mean, we're, to your point, we're, we have to go by our guidelines and, you know, this is a historic preservation commission. So it, it feels like we're, and that, and the house, in regard to the house, it feels like there's been no give.
Right, well, I mean, probably not as much as what you would like, admittedly, no doubt about it. Uh, one of the things I personally struggle with in the, in the sense of trying to retain that house and you even kind of did a little hand wave there a minute ago about jogging around that particular existing building and still trying to get as much land use as you can. Then you're completely cutting off that house from any kind of rear access. You know, it would be a twelve hundred square foot house on probably a non-conforming lot.
See, now you're sitting and you're talking about this. Show us, show the commission that, show that you thought about that. Sketch it out on a napkin or whatever.
We did, we did in another, I mean, a previous plan, we showed jogging.
No, well, here, here's what we are gonna do. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna repackage that and get back to it.
So one thing on that point, so the treetops right across High Street on Whittier, right, that development.
Tom Rosenberg's doing.
Yeah, he used the existing residential buildings, the houses that were there. And this was done a long time ago and I, you know, paid attention to it.
I'm old enough to remember it, yeah.
Yeah, but same here. So, so those houses are units of the development. So there's no need to have rear access for the house if there, the residents that live in the house are part of your project and use your garage. And, you know, that, that's a thought of how you do that. Otherwise, I'll say this, if you parcel that house out, my house in Germ Village is almost the same size. I don't have a driveway, I don't have a garage, I don't have rear access. That's a pretty common condition in, in this part of the city. And, you know, I understand the expense of that, but, you know, that's, that's a separate issue.
And I, I can appreciate that, but one thing is you have a grandfather non-conforming lot. For me to create that today would be very, very difficult. It's my opinion. I mean, if I were to say, I'm gonna take that house and it's gonna be landlocked, it's only gonna have access on Front Street as nothing else. And I'm gonna block that off and I'm gonna call that a lot of record, okay? And it's a standalone from the rest of the project. Me getting all the signups for that because I won't meet current standards will be difficult. Unless I'm missing something.
Well, I don't know if that's true, maybe it is, maybe it's not.
We can, we can show that on a, on a drawing.
Yeah, and that's, that's part of the exercise.
John, maybe too, um, my question would be towards the, the house and the warehouse. Um, I mean, from where we're originally on this, as, and I don't know, maybe we've never brought this in, but the warehouse completely gone? I don't, I just spent so long, I can't.
Originally.
But the ware, I guess, because I think that's the thing we've added, haven't we come back with that now as, you know, we, because at one time, I think we were going down, higher, I mean, there's a lot of things there that, which I guess we could deal with if we get, I guess, past the house. We can come back in on that and we actually, you know, we obviously aren't gonna be, whatever decisions is on the house, we're not gonna be doing anything on the house until we come back and, you know, show the full plan.
No, if your, if your point is, yes, our original, original, going way back to the thing, was to take warehouse down. And through this process, you know, that became obvious that that became a priority.
So that may be some of the, if you said frustration too, that could be some of it too, because we do feel, definitely I can speak on the ownership and the family involved here, that we, you know, we definitely, I mean, our background is to try to, to do great projects. And, and this building will be, you know, and my kids, my kids' kids, I'm sure, I know that for a fact, we don't sell things. And, uh, so definitely we wanna create the best project that we can and hear from you. But also, you know, there is the financial impact and we, we feel like we've already scaled back quite a bit. And then obviously, which I don't know if that falls in, under this, right? I don't know the technicalities, but, you know, I just read an article a couple of days ago about housing, right? It's like every day, housing, housing, housing. So we obviously are, you know, we have full responsibility towards that. I know, and that's just not from a development.
We understand that, yeah.
And I'm sure you hear that all the time, so I don't wanna.
We do, but this commission and, yeah, we keep, we staff and commissioners keep that in back of their mind all the time. They're, no, we need housing. But their focus has to be the code that they follow, which is historic preservation.
Yeah.
Well, this is, it's really good for you to tell us what you felt was missing. And I think sometimes an advocate can make an assumption, it's not from what you say or anything. But I, I think we have been, we have thought that, oh, everybody would agree that preserving a big part of that warehouse might be more important, would be more important than preserving the house, okay? And that was probably not, even if you feel that way, you still wanna see what the alternative is. And that's what we haven't done.
I think this is the best discussion we've had.
That's probably because we're not seven million square feet, you know, we're all right here and we can talk to each other. It seems like it's easier today. Yeah, so commissioners, I think that we should all agree that the access ingress egress on Front Street, okay.
I, I think, I think it would be good for, I'd like to hear from public service one more time, but I, I think you've chased that down enough that I get where you're coming from. So that, you know, we can probably move on from that issue.
And I think that Front Street, and I've said this before, as long as there's some kind of signage to let a pedestrian know, like, don't get hit kind of thing, right? Yeah, um, I think that's fine. Um, but I did have one question though, so that exit arrow, um, that's on the rear on Bank Street, that's on the go away at this point, right? Okay.
Yeah, there was actually an update to this when we've just given you so much information.
Yeah, it's been a while.
That I made sure that we got rid of, because I told these guys, get that off of here. And we succeeded because you're looking at the older version of it, but.
And, and so I, I'll say this, as I, I've worked in a lot of different places and spaces and know how Columbus evolves over time. And I don't know how to be mindful of this, but at some point Bank Street may be developed, right? And so making sure that at some point there's future access for your building to utilize Bank Street if it is ever, um, created as a thoroughway, right? Just like the lame stone area that no one ever thought would ever become, you know, kind of road there. Look at it now, it is a road that goes through there. Who would ever have thought that? I, I'm really Columbus and I, I know the history of most things. So I'm just saying, I don't know what that looks like. I'm not saying you have to come back and propose anything, I'm just saying be mindful.
Sure.
And so that could be parking pillars with a, a garage door that can never get used and parking spaces can be there. I don't know what that looks like. I'm not an architect, but I, I am a planner and I know how things rapidly change.
Wait, yeah.
Yes, that's.
And I, I pulled the Samford map from a hundred years ago and that alley was not paved south of gossip.
How much that?
It, it was noted on there, I mean, I didn't have to infer it. It said on there, not paved. Um, so I, I understand exactly what you're saying and, but at the same time, um.
There's something to ponder, that's all, I'm just putting the bug in the air there.
Oh, yeah, I got it, I hear you, literally.
I do agree with my other commissioners that it would be nice to see an alternative of what the house, if the house was to remain, what would it look like, right? And I came in late to the game, I was not here for the very first meeting. Um, so it, it would be nice to see if that is an option. If it's not an option, let us determine that and look in, and assess. Versus, um, we have no doubt that it's not gonna be cheap for us to maintain the house, but let us assess the, the visual if it's feasible or not. Does that make sense?
Yes, all in all, I think there's one other quick point.
So we've heard people against your, your project come and speak. We haven't heard anyone come and speak for the project currently, right? So I think it's important that, that also might happen. I mean, we're still talking about a five story building, you know, ten feet from the neighboring property in your current proposed condition. So that's another thing that we have to think about. So I just, you know, would, would put that back to you guys to, to consider.
One step forward, one step sideways.
How soon this commission is going to continue to?
Yeah.
Is there any other comments or?
What are we looking at? What the, what do you think about the timing on the?
Well.
If we're not gonna.
We can get this to her on the twenty-ninth, right?
Who on the twenty-ninth is someone?
The sixth, no, the sixth would be the meeting, we'd have to have information in by the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, and, you know.
And they have to.
And also trying to set up that, will that be useful without having a meeting onsite with public service?
What's the level of detail that would be necessary to give you a good feel? Because I, I think, you know, a big part of it is that we're losing a chunk of the warehouse, right? I mean, that's the alternative here. How much do you need to see where you think you'd be?
I think what the commission is saying, not losing either. Right, we wanna see what it looks like not losing either.
Yes, that, that, just to clarify fully.
It's not we're saying either or. What you need to look at is preserving the front part of the house and all of the warehouse. And does that work, does it not work? Is there any alternative that you can build anyway and have egress?
When you say the house, do, do you look at the house as, like, is it, like, when you say front part of the house, I guess?
Yeah.
The original part.
The original part, not just the house, not just the front of the house.
That's correct, none of your solid.
I know, it's just, yeah.
Well, the house itself was added on to, they don't, they don't care about that part, it's just the very, very original part, yeah.
Not that they don't care, but that's the comp, that is the only compromise I think that they're willing to let go of.
Yeah, well, I do think, I think what Adam was trying to point out, you know, what the level of commitment that ownership has made relative to the overall site preservation aspect of, of the project, I think it's very significant. And I think to some degree, uh, they feel that they, that might not be recognized, you know? Because it is a significant commitment to the community.
This commission recognized.
I think we all recognize that, it's just that they have code, they have to follow.
If we didn't give you so much heartburn about tearing down a house, we wouldn't be doing our job.
Yeah, and we wouldn't have the preservation commission.
Well, let's, I mean, I think we just, you know, it's close enough that we, it's not like we'd love for, to get an answer, but we would like the right answer. So I think if we're not gonna get the right answer, then we need to try to come back with some more details. And I think the timing on that, I mean, all I would ask is if, just based on the amount of time, um, and I know that's not just all you, that's us. We've, we've taken our time on the property too. Um, but now we're, you know, we've been working hard out of here and we'd like to try to get back in as soon as possible if we can get that meeting. If that's, if we are able to align everyone out there prior to the sixth, I think that would be, be great.
And we will clarify some of the stuff we figured we're on, for the twenty-ninth.
Okay, yeah, and you, we may already have, yes.
And what's the purpose of getting public safety out there? Because they've been out there, they've given us.
Whenever with the commission and with staff, I think we all, we all need to be on the same page. What we're hearing from you is, we're not saying we think you're liars, but it's all hearsay.
And I think you're more looking at, on the public.
They haven't been able to ask them any questions onsite or anything like that.
And on the public safety side, I think you're, it'd be more in line probably with what you're talking about on the site, I'm thinking, somewhat, on the size of that drive area and those things, so that would probably come into play.
Yes, I, so when you said.
Because I mean, that would affect, I guess, the depth of the.
Yes, I, what I'm saying is if, if you guys are saying you need twenty-six plus feet and then you need to go another five or 10 or whatever it is into the house to make that access work, I'm questioning that. That's, you know, to be clear. Like, so I wanna hear public, public service say, I, I don't know about that, you know? And what, what can we do, uh, and just kind of hear that.
But does public service, and forgive me for this question, um, do they control the ingress and egress?
Well, that's, that's a question for you guys, I, I think, I, I'm not sure exactly.
Well, they, they've told us we could have two-way egress. I think the bigger question you're looking for to destroy leisure is that who says what that width is? What's the minimum acceptable width?
Yes.
Is that more of a building's regulation?
Yeah, but I think he's saying that would not necessarily be them, they could never say that.
Traffic being.
That's what I'm trying to figure, who's the right person?
No, no, I'll talk to the only two.
Yeah.
Traffic, and Blaischmidt, Dan, who you were talking about?
Dan Blaischmidt?
Uh-huh.
Dan Moore has still, huh?
Couldn't tell you, I was dealing with Brandon Hayes and Dan Blaischmidt.
Okay, that's easy.
And I'm happy to, uh, actually right now, I'll do it, Connie, I'll forward you the last email that I sent them. Because trust me, I'd, I'd love to, I'd love to put this to rest. I've been spending way too much time.
So I'm, I'll be, I'm trying to pin down the assumptions, I guess, that's what, yeah, okay. Do we need, do we need any?
Continue?
Yes, so, yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion to continue.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How's still this picture you have?
This, our picture?
Oldest picture, like, you mean, like, you know, when.
I found the, the, I, I have a copy of a Metta Plaza library picture, um, that was out of a directory in the thirties.
I found, I just couldn't take, that's one across.
That's awesome, by the way, that.
It's got a canal, go to the.
Oh, there's the, oh, yeah, behind you. I'm like, wait a minute.
We didn't talk about the water feature yet.
Yeah, we expect you to restore the canal.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we'll get, we'll get right on that one, yeah, we're really good at that.
Pardon me?
Are you related to Dan Ammanniachi?
Yes, he is my better half and, and a member of the architectural profession.
Yeah, I'm, I've, I've got the Dan.
Oh, great, well, you're Lewis? You need a sign, so I know who the heck you are.
Yeah, he doesn't get it, he.
Especially.
Okay.
So I, I will forward those to you, Connie, and then, um, could you give me a call tomorrow, Friday, or Nick? Are you, are you making any progress on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, Walter, for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. Patient.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, move to conceptual applications.
Um, no, this one, um, actually.
This is not conceptual, okay, got it.
It is conceptual.
It is, it is.
But the first part of it isn't conceptual.
Okay, yes, so we'll, we'll move to case BD dash twenty-two dash oh-nine dash oh-oh-five A, five-twenty South High Street. Um, to state your names and affiliations for the record.
Yeah, Mike Shannon, attorney for the applicant, Shift Capital.
Brian Stone, uh, with Shift Capital.
All right, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
All right.
And is anyone coming up, anyone else coming to discuss this architecture or are you here?
Uh, our, our architect was here, but then had a family thing that popped up, so we've allowed him to add that进去.
Um, because I think it might be quicker to go ahead and do theme first.
Oh, okay, okay.
Modified previously recommended variances. Um, so you know that the demolition addition and new construction was approved in October twenty-twenty-one. Um, let's see, and we discussed that. And at that time, there was also a, um, a variant recommendation made, um, since the previous variance, variance recommendation permitted uses and height variances has not changed. Removal of the second floor parking, previous parking variance, uh, which was a reduction of one hundred and seventeen required to sixty-eight has changed to a reduction of one hundred and thirty-one required spaces to forty-four provided spaces. A lease agreement will be entered into for offsite spaces. Variance number two, uh, applicant request of variance to allow joint commercial use to occupy a minimum of sixty-five percent of the South High Street frontage. Uh, is a new variance request related to the commercial use facing onto High Street. At four and five, our new variances request are related to parking. Recommend an affirmative recommendation for the application with the following stipulations, uh. Actually, this has to do, never mind that. I have to do the other part of it. Recommend an affirmative recommendation.
Okay. So, we're basically just tweaking some of the previous?
Yeah.
And are there less units now, so there's less parking and therefore?
I'll let the applicant explain that.
Again, thank you for accommodating us with a special meeting. Uh, two of the three board members were present at the business meeting where we discussed this.
Yeah.
Um, for ease of, I, I don't want to inundate you, and I know you guys are high-tech, but this is a, a good summary of the change in the parking variance. And it was my intention to come back only with the parking variance, and I'll explain that, with absolutely no, um, changes to the exterior, um, and to, since, since the business meeting, our architect has sent some sketches to Connie that clarifies a lot of things. But with respect to the zoning, basically, we had a, uh, subterranean floor of parking and two floors of parking above grade. Uh, we are proposing that the second floor, uh, which was originally parking, we'd like to change that to units, which would require an increase in our parking variance. And the numbers work out that, uh, you can see the delta in Eric's summary there. And once again, we would be able to provide those spaces in a written lease agreement, uh, which could be a condition of your approval, and those spaces would be directly across the street. In terms of total disclosure, I should point out that, um, in addition to, uh, the number of variances, we also asked that, uh, um, uh, two parking spaces be allowed to be a width of, um, uh, eight feet, um, as opposed to the nine-foot and required in the code. And also, we had, um, uh, two, two spa- two spaces that are called buddy spaces that are only accessible by one unit.
Stacked.
Yes, stacked.
So, so this way, stacked?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay.
Yes, sir. So, all of the other variances are identical, uh, but since we did a council variance to begin with, Shannon Pine advised us just to amend it, include all of the original variances in your new variances, and that's, uh, the, the zoning side of what we are asking for today.
I've seen this before. I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with it.
And staff has recommended approval of the other regulatory agencies in the city.
Yeah, so, so we have a motion to approve?
To recommend.
To re- recommend?
A motion to recommend the, are some of the things?
B, I guess.
B?
It would be the, all the council variance. It just be, excuse me, I'm sorry. To approve the council variance would be the appropriate recommendation.
Okay, all the council variances, it looks like this is related to parking, right? Make sure I'm clear on what I'm approving.
Yes.
Do you need, need to call out the numbers?
No, I mean, it's BD two-two oh-nine oh-oh-five B, uh, but the variances are numbers one through seven, basically. And there are a couple of other things other than parking, uh, but most of those were not, were, are the same as they were previously recommended by the commission.
Do, do we need to add the minor dimensional things to this?
They're, they're included in the, uh, formal application they submitted to staff.
Yeah, the applicant requests a variance to reduce the minimum width of seven parking spaces from nine feet wide to eight feet, and also to allow two pairs of parking spaces.
Okay, so, I, I move to support all the variances outlined one through seven, um, in the application. Looking at Connie to confirm, like, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Case in part A. Uh, again, demolition and new construction was approved in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the footprint of the building has been changed since that time, and revised drawings have been submitted. They've got some color-coded, uh, drawings that were sent in that are very helpful to show how, uh, the footprint was pulled in, which is a good thing, actually. Uh, so, on these drawings, the blue indicates areas of massing removed from the project, and the window pattern was altered based on the reduced massing. These changes are indicated in orange on the drawings, uh, the design of the building is in keeping with the originally approved design. And just to note, Lindsay windows and Windsor windows are both approved as a casquette. Uh, details of the approved Lindsay three thousand windows, which still needed to be submitted to HPO staff. I never received that. I do have the details for the Windsor windows. Uh, the issue that staff has with this, uh, with this, these changes of removing the parking, second-floor parking and changing that to residential is that infill of original window and door openings and introduction of new window and door openings is not consistent with the renewed district commission guidelines. The entire west and north exterior walls and interior space are being demolished for new construction. Altering openings on the south elevation further reduces the historic fabric of the building. This is so, this is conceptual.
Okay, so it's really the next?
The next.
Keep going, the next.
Elevation there.
And so that's existing, and then, right, the bottom one is the proposed condition, right?
Yes. So, you see all the orange, or, or this is the place would be the dark spots behind our infill, um, and then orange, our new windows. Although, I think the orange on the bottom.
Is the orange on the bottom infill also?
Yeah, that's infill also.
Okay, so the big, the big orange square is infill?
Is infill removed, right?
It's a.
There used to be a storefront window there.
Correct, yes.
It's gone.
Yeah.
In their proposal. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, maybe you could.
On the second floor, they're showing the orange is new windows. On the, on the first floor, for some reason, they made those orange.
I think orange is the change, I think. Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's a change, okay. But you can see behind, you know, this light gray infill windows on the second floor and also a door on the first floor. You see where I'm saying that?
Uh, no. These two are gone.
Yeah.
And then adding one that's up here.
You can leave, you can have it, you can do it, it'll be back up. You have a photo of that elevation?
Uh, in the submission, maybe?
I don't know.
Okay.
Hard to tell.
Uh, that was it.
Is this it?
Yeah.
That's the photo you're looking for?
Yeah, there. So, maybe you could talk us through what's driving those changes. Um, I think I get it, but I just want to hear you guys talk about it.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, one of my greater perceived strengths is knowing my weaknesses. And Brad Parrish was here.
Understood, yeah.
And had to leave for his, uh, son's birthday party. So, um, I don't want to get her wrong, um, but from the civilian eye, uh, in my understanding, and Mr. Stone, you can help me out, but, um, Brad felt that, uh, the proposed changes were part of the, the programming. He understood that it would require, um, an, an approval or the certificate of appropriateness. But he felt that the changes, and this is my vernacular, were de minimis and that, um, we didn't do anything to, um, hurt the, uh, historical integrity of our preservation elements that we're trying to, to keep. Above and beyond that, um, I'm not going to try to, uh, articulate architectural principles.
Yeah, right.
Uh, under the rule of inverse proportionality, the less I speak about architecture, the better the chances are. And I know this doesn't apply to CFA's, um, but I mentioned to you in the business meeting that variances, you have to show a hardship. Uh, my client feels that hardship is the, I'm their lawyer, but that doesn't meet the legal standard for a variance. So, um, if you have anything that you can add, uh, that's more germane, Mr. Stone.
So, um, as you mentioned, the original plan showed the second story as, uh, parking. Therefore, uh, the window placement wasn't as large of a factor. Now that that is being used as, um, usable space, uh, that'll be frequented by tenants. On the one hand, there's the practical side where, um, that provides, uh, interior light and spaces where, um, interior light would be needed. And then, uh, from a aesthetic perspective and talking to, um, to Brad, uh, there's equal spacing. Um, if you look at the current window pattern, it's a little, um, hodgepodge and not symmetrical. So, um, he thought that, as Mike had said, uh, it's de minimis, a dimin- this change and potentially an improvement.
Is, is that space where those windows are? Is that common area space for the residential units, or are they residential units?
I'm going to give you my best recollection based on, um, so, part of it is common area space and then part of it is actual residences.
Okay.
And I think the majority of it is residences.
That's correct.
So, really, I think it's just, uh, just the orange stuff on the first floor in the existing building, or the second floor in the existing building that?
It, it is, we're wondering.
Isolated to that lower, yeah, rating. I mean, the removal of these, uh, but the addition of these and then the mystery of what's actually going on with the existing building is a little bit iffy. I also don't understand what this is.
Yeah.
Because it's, that condition is not on the, on the proposed. I think that's actually a, uh, roll-up door on the proposed, so I don't understand what is being indicated by those two squares.
We needed to, and again, I'm gonna go off of my best knowledge of what was going on. We had discussions with, uh, the utility companies, and we needed to provide exterior access to one of them. And I think that that change has something to do with that, that transformer that you see to the left of that. Um, again, that, I'm not an engineer or an architect, so, um, but that's my best recollection of what that was.
Other than that, I just feel like it's a bunch of neutral moves on the.
Yeah, I, I agree, with the neutral move.
I will say, I appreciate the before and the after.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Take it easy.
It would make Connie's job a lot easier if it was submitted initially that way.
I know, I was like, if everybody would do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the, the, the changes, to me, are not, um, heavily impactful. The appearance of the exterior of the building has not changed significantly. And the design of the, the windows that have been selected on the changes are the same as was already there. So, it's not deviating too much. Um, yeah.
So.
I believe that's consistent with what the other board members said at the business meeting as well, who is not present. Susan, is it?
Cynthia?
Cynthia, I'm sorry, Cynthia, no problem.
My feedback about the second-story windows on the original building of what was the copious building is that I, I think there's some charm about the randomness of the windows that were there. And then just putting in a repetitive vinyl window seems like a bit of a loss to me and a little bit, you know, you lose that random urban character, uh, which is a nice way to put it. Yeah.
And also, you're also currently losing an entire west wall and, I believe, north wall. So.
Right.
My point was, again, you're, you know, you're kind of only leaving a facade in. The facade is wasn't something we'd like to try to, well.
Um, yeah, like, I get another way to say that was you're chewing off half the building.
Yeah.
Stop touching it.
Yeah.
If, uh, if the commission would feel more comfortable, um, we could have Brad come back, uh, for the next meeting. I don't want to create a meeting for you on the sixth. It's not necessary by any means. But if you're gonna have one anyway, um, that's not, um, an extraordinary amount of time to wait. And again, uh, I apologize that I can't be more articulate about this.
But I think it would be helpful for me to understand, like, similar to what we were talking about earlier, if you need windows to make residential units work, maybe there's a in-between, between, you know. So, I think I would be open to that idea of trying to maintain sort of a rhythm. But I'd, I'd love to see residential units up against that existing facade looking out personally. And it, it would, uh, kind of force you to make sure that facade stays as well because, uh, as we saw at King and High, that, that did not happen, uh, with facade to me, so.
Yeah, really.
So.
Despite, but you're right.
Yeah.
And we tried.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm.
No, 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 I, you know, I mean, that was a.
Yes, yes.
Heck of a learning experience.
Right.
Trying to do that.
Right.
With the north elevation, can you go to that, um, blue, sort of, Connie? I mean, it has, well, that is the west side of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're looking for the north?
North, yep, so right there. So, the, are you, are you saying that, I mean, the, the windows are?
It's the south.
Uh, no.
Yes, it's.
It says north on the.
Yeah, that's, I was, yeah, that's north.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so.
Oh, that's right, it's on the other side of the street.
So, yeah, so the new windows, so what you're saying is, is I keep the existing windows that are there and don't put the new windows in? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, uh, I guess I'm, I'm coming at it as kind of the in-between. Like, if you need, if you need to have windows for your, you know, living spaces, et cetera, to make the residential units work, and this, what's there now doesn't work with that, then.
You want to see that it doesn't work.
Yeah.
Got you.
And, and maybe there's a compromise there.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sold that adding a repetitive vinyl window is kind of really adding to the building or the fabric. I don't know.
Takes away from the charm.
Takes away from the charm and just spend the money on the, spend some money on the, this original building and add to it in a way?
We can do that. We can do that.
Because it's also remove brick, uh, fills.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, you're gonna replace it with something, probably a little bit less.
Maybe that on the first floor, you can do some, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, we can reconnoitre with our architect and, um, not do it on your time and, uh, come back in October, unless, well, that's probably.
It is conceptual, right? So, they asked them.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but we're noting lawyers thought it was conceivable that it could be approved today, I mean, uh, sitting in your chair. But, um, if the October sixth meeting is available, um, we'll have Brad submit everything that might address your concerns by the twenty ninth.
Would say he should try to be prepared to retain as many of the existing openings as possible.
I, I understand, uh, the gist of the comments and, um, again, but for his daughter's birthday, he could respond right now and, uh.
I, I get it, yeah.
Yeah, I've got it, yeah.
I understand.
We've got five minutes left, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so very much. Uh, do we have to move to continue that, or I'm being?
Because it was, it was listed as.
That's Daniel's question.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, so, next on the agenda, do we have someone? Okay. Hello?
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, no, Brad.
So, this is case BD dash twenty-two dash oh-nine dash zero-zero-seven, six-eighty-four South High Street. Would you like to, uh, state your name and affiliation for the record?
Uh, Bradley Blumenscheid, Rhythm Architecture.
All right, and if you, uh, raise your right hand, swear you're in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right.
Um, so this actually is requested is conceptual by the applicant?
Yes.
In my opinion, if the commission is okay with approving it and there's any reason why you would not want to have it approved, I'm not sure. But I think it's at a level that it could be approved if that, if that's something that you would want.
We're still working on pricing.
Okay.
For the materials. I, I'd rather hold off on that.
Okay, that's fine then.
That's good news. I'm glad you guys like it.
I just wish there were no, we had no issues as staff and at the business meeting, there were no major issues, so. The existing outdoor seating area and railings were previously approved when a Panera restaurant moved into the former Slaughtermont Building. Uh, the proposed change of railings, tables, and chairs, and introduction of new drink rails and plantings is consistent with the character and use of the building. Just need to then provide, uh, comments for conceptual reviews, conceptual review, no action required. Just need to then provide, uh, comments for conceptual review, conceptual review with no action required.
Okay, Mr. Moore? Yeah, yeah, yes.
Uh, so, a new restaurant is wanting to move into the building. We're working on the interior design right now while we go through this process. Uh, I recommended to them that we just use the existing patio, not expand it or make it smaller or anything. Put in the new railing with the drink rail like you had mentioned, and, uh, we're considering the, the metal structure. I don't know if it's gonna be steel or aluminum with the polycarbonate panels. The tenants are wanting as much transparency in the roof as possible. But pricing and material availability might be an issue, which we're working through that. Basically, the idea is they want to be able to use the patio even when it rains, uh, but not necessarily when it's cold. So, they're not interested in closing it in the winter or anything like that.
I think, I didn't really catch this in the business meeting, but the polycarbonate is a little, it's a little scary.
Yeah, and I don't know if it will even work at this point.
Right.
That's why it's like, eh, let's stick to conceptual, and we'll kind of go from there. I think, uh, the, the owners, cause this is the north side of the building.
Right.
So the tenants are wanting to capture that northern light as much as possible, but also still provide covering. So, but price is also an issue and constructability as well, so that's kind of what we're trying to figure out right now.
Yeah.
Does the poly, does it have a color, or is it just clear?
It, right now, it's just clear.
Okay.
It might have a color in the future.
Well, that's, yeah.
Right.
Uh, and plus, depending on if there's a slope to the trellis, water may sit on it, and blackstone may start to accumulate.
Yeah.
Um, I think the toughest part is the desire from the owners to keep water off the tenants fully while they're out there. I mean, otherwise, you could have some sort of, um, slatted metal on top of there that would be attractive and provide shade.
Yeah, there, the goal for the, uh, for the interior is to fit as many people for a restaurant. So, if they have the inside full plus the patio full, and there's a quick squall, where do those people go?
Right.
Uh, not necessarily as, oh, it's gonna rain all day, let's go sit out on the patio kind of thing, but in the event that there's some inclement weather that randomly pops up, cause this is Ohio.
Do you know what other materials y'all are exploring for that, besides the polycarbonate?
Well, I mean, considering that we're doing so much metal out there, I think something like a slatted metal of some sort, or something a little more rigid, that's more, uh, color consistent and weather resistant, I think is gonna be probably where we end up. I'm not sure right now. They were really sold on this, and I was like, oh, hold on a second. Slow down, make sure we can afford this.
So we're just reviewing, I was at the business meeting, so sorry, I'm catching a little bit, we're, we're just reviewing the patio.
That's all.
Okay, so the sign and all the other stuff basically remains as...
Yeah, they're still working on the branding for the signage, and definitely want to reuse the sign up there, cause, holy crap, that thing's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. The Claremont.
Yeah, we're still, yeah, we're still working on that.
Right. Yeah, that, so that was the Claremont.
Yeah.
Sign for the original Claremont, so it's a great opportunity to do something cool for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's great, this building's gonna be reused.
Yes.
Yeah, Panera has a lot of lights on this building, oh my gosh, when they took the canopies off, there are lights everywhere. So, there'll be a lot of cleaning up of the facade. But it really, the, the idea is just, as far as like massing is concerned, and amount that we're covering of the patio, is that like consistent with what you guys would like to see there? Are there any concerns about heights or anything like that, beyond the materiality of the thing?
I have a question, this is totally from my own knowledge, so this has nothing to do with comment, but do you have to have a full enclosure for liquor permit?
Yes.
So, okay, so you, like, the, the gates that you have, they can let people out, but they still have to be there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And because of distance, we need to have them.
The dista- okay, got it, for safety, got it, okay, so...
And what is the, the white gate in this picture?
That's existing, actually, uh, right there along the sidewalk.
Okay.
It kind of goes away when you're out there, but it's not great, you know, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Does it have to be white?
Uh, so what we did when we modeled it is the existing stuff is white, and then the proposed things are the darker color to create differentiation, cause we're not sure of the exact color and everything yet, so it, it just appears white in the rendering. It, it will stay.
There are a lot of black ones.
Catch up on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how they...
You gotta have more.
Ching, buy them by the gross.
Those were under awnings?
Uh, they were on top of awnings, and then they also have the wall sconces between the awnings, and then lights above the windows, too.
Oh, I missed that part, yeah.
Yeah, and they're all over the place, and on the inside, too. I don't know how they pass energy guards, I mean, ridiculous.
Wow.
It was your favorite restaurant in town.
Yeah, so as we develop this, you know, we're obviously gonna strip away most of those light fixtures and come back with something that's more integrated with this design, so that's why it's still conceptual, see what really fits together.
Personally, I think, creating a really great patio with vibrant stuff happening there is fantastic. So, I, I don't know if you're looking at lighting or other things to really make that space, you know, excellent, but, uh, you know, I'd be supportive of that for sure, um, when you guys come back, so...
For sure, yes, that's great, I think, excited to see more.
Yeah, this, this is a really great little node that's developing here.
Yeah.
On this block, so, yeah, we'll see it continue.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, any, anything else? Awesome, thank you guys very much.
You know, what's gonna, I, there's a little bit of action, I think, in the little business space to the south of there, too. Do you know anything about that?
The building...
It was like a Verizon or something.
I have no idea. Placed brick on it, it's kind of interesting, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of weird little buildings down there, and I didn't even know were there until we started walking around.
Yeah, for sure.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So I think that's, that's all we have, so can we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
A whole second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks everyone.